Common Council, today is September 21st, 2022. It is now 6:43 PM and the meeting is called to order. Can everyone please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and prayer?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. We pray for your grace and your covering as we do the city's business. We pray for your protection and for peace in our country. In your blessed name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Today, we have a quorum. Counselor Chevlat was not able to make it today, but he will be back for our first of the month meeting on 10-3. Next, we have comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do we have any?
Madam President, I have a few. Okay, first, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Shawn Wright-Brownor. She's a resident of the City of Lawrence. She was recently honored with the Tom Paul Outstanding Director of the Year Award. She also sits on the Board of Public Works. Mrs. Shawn Wright-Brownor is the Director of the J Everett Light Career Center in Indianapolis, Indiana. She provides programs for high school students to explore their passion. Many of the J E L C C programs provide training for jobs currently in high demand. For more information on the J E L C C, visit the J E L C C dot com. And I would like to thank Mrs. Shawn Wright-Brownor for her outstanding work with our youth. I had to stop past her house and I congratulated her in person for the council. And I also have a couple more recognition to Caleb Jones, who is a graduate of Lawrence North High School. He played football for the Wildcats, number 77. He also graduated from IU, the Hoosiers, and he, his jersey was number 77. Caleb Jones made his debut Sunday night when the Packers played the Chicago Bears at Lambeau Field. The Packers won that night against the Bears 27 to 10, and Caleb wears number 72 now with the Green Bay Packers. Lawrence is so proud of you, Caleb Jones. Keep up the good work and sacks. And the other one, I have a lot. The Spirit Center is not for sale, and I'm going to let the administration come up and explain that to the residents here. And our butterfly bench was stolen in Kinston Farms in the sanctuary last month. So I'm telling everybody, if you see something, say something, and I know somebody saw something.
That was in Kinston Farms?
It was in Kinston Farms.
Isn't that terrible?
A butterfly bench. And then, I'm still having trouble with the neighbors in Watson Farms. They're still getting frustrated about the folks parking inside the Cody Sachs, dropping their kids off at Falk Creek Valley and Forest Glen and all the other schools. Right now, we're working on a proposal 29 with our council attorney for this concern. And the other one, the light posts and globes are in the works. I spoke with Jim Hannigan about the damaged light posts and the globes, and they need to be replaced, and I was told it would cost roughly over $15,000. And his department is working with Indy to establish which is Indianapolis and which is the City of Lawrence light posts. Oh, yes, Lawrence has been busy. I went to the Art for Lawrence event Saturday night, and it was fantastic. Judy Byron was blown away with all the hospitality and everything that was given to her on that night. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Seeing none? Next on the agenda, signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion?
Can I make the motion?
Motion, Counsel Freeman.
I'll second.
Second, Counsel Rusomoroff. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Wells.
Yes.
Counsel Rusomoroff.
Yes.
Counsel Freeman.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Counselor Chavis.
Yes.
Counselor Russell.
Yes.
Counselor Denny.
Yes.
Counselor Giles.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have unfinished business, proposal number 17, 2022.
Proposal number 17, 2022, introduced by Counselor Denny, a proposal for an ordinance amending Title I, Article II, Chapter 2, Section 4 of the municipal code, the City of Lawrence, redistricting common council district boundaries pursuant to Indiana Code 36-4-6-3, and providing a time when the same shall take effect.
Okay, that is in committee as a whole, and we will hear that on 10-3. Next, we have proposal number 22, 2022.
Proposal number 22, 2022, introduced by Counsel Freeman, a proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of the City of Lawrence, Indiana Economic Development Revenue Bonds and the lending of the proceeds thereof to KG Fort LLC, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Okay, that's in Finance. Next, we have proposal number 23, 2022.
Proposal number 23, 2022, introduced by Counsel Wells, a proposal for an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the City of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2023.
Okay, next, we have proposal number, oh, I'm sorry, that is in Finance as well. Next, we have proposal number 24, 2022.
Proposal number 24, 2022, introduced by Counsel Wells, a proposal for an ordinance establishing compensation for elected officials for the City of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2023, and providing a time when the same shall take effect.
Okay, that's in Finance. Next, we have proposal number 25, 2022.
Proposal number 25, 2022, introduced by Counsel Wells, a proposal for an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the Police Department and the Fire Department for the year 2023.
Next, we have, oh, I'm sorry, that's in Finance as well. Next, we have proposal number 26, 2022.
Proposal number 26, 2022, introduced by Counsel Freeman, a proposal for an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the 2023 budget year.
Okay, that's in Finance. Next, we have new business. There is none. We are going to continue with any department head. Tyler wants to come forward and finish.
Y'all pull up the.
Okay, great.
So, next on the list is.
I did.
Are we adjourning this meeting?
No.
No.
Next on the, on the list, we have DPW Streets and Garage, kind of as a whole, then it'll be IT and Parks. So we'll be, we'll try to be quick.
Okay.
Discussion.
So this is the DPW Street Department together. I'm going to start with the DPW. As you can see, the 2022 accomplishments and 2023 objectives are there. For the 2022, we continue to, you know, roll out online permitting. We just submitted for the Community Crossing Grant for a million dollars, and awaiting the announcement on that. And we, on the stormwater side, we are continuing to address concerns from the citizens. We have a contractor out there doing more, fixing drainage issues every day. We are, we are going, we are going to submit for an OCR Grand in November, which is probably a $600,000 match to do a project that was identified early on this year for this bond list. So the council will be seeing ordinance on that in the October 3 meeting. I'm working with Chris on that. So that is something that we are going after on the stormwater side, and we are continuously looking for more grant opportunities for transportation as well as stormwater side. Regarding the budget itself, if you look at the numbers, our DPW budget is pretty much very, I mean, or like roughly 100,000, 130,000 less than last year's, this year's budget. So there is honestly no fluff in there. It's basically everything that we need to do, run business, like permits and all that stuff, and do court enforcement and stuff like that. So that's, that's what most of the, I mean, it's then the salaries and other stuff. So that is essentially what we need to have DPW operational. On the stormwater side, it's pretty much similar to what we approve, what we have for this year. We have set aside some money for maintenance, and then we're going to start some additional design for future projects, so that if and when we start getting those monies together, we can bid these projects out. So that's, I mean, it's pretty clear on, on the, on the different funds there. And I'll take any questions after that. So that is basically DPW and Stormwater on a higher level. Again, I'll stop here to answer any questions on any specific funds you have for DPW and Stormwater.
Just one for clarification, and so everybody's on the same page. And Tyler, you may be able to answer this. So when we allocate funds from ARP for a specific project, you don't transfer the funds necessarily to the general fund. Those funds still stay within ARP, so we don't see it within this book. But do the expenses, that's the first question. So are the ARP funds staying in the ARP account? And the second is, do the expenses come into the general fund, or do the expenses then go to the ARP fund as well?
So the ARP fund's a separate fund. Everything has to be booked, accounted for, and expended out of that fund. You can't transfer ARP into any other funds.
So the stormwater funds, the street funds, the sewer funds that we've allocated from ARP, the, what is paid for, those projects will be billed back to that account. We won't see those necessarily.
Right, yeah. You'll see those when we do the ARP budget, but you will not see it in the normal civil city budget. Correct. Yep. This is just general fund DPW and then Fund 630, the Stormwater Fund.
Any other questions on DPW Stormwater?
I have one, I think. So your fund is, if we go to, I have to find my page again.
It's 78, 77, and 78. So DPW operates mostly out of the general fund.
Yes.
And the Stormwater operates solely out of the Stormwater Fund, but some of the work we do on the transportation, road maintenance, it comes out of the MVH and LRS, too. So, you know, I handle a lot of the strip patching, maintenance, crack sealing, all that stuff, though we use a lot of MVH funds, most specifically restricted MVH funds, which could be only used for that purposes. We use, I allocate that for those purposes. Same thing with LRS, too, a lot of the sidewalk repairs that Jim and I coordinate with, that comes out of the LRS funds. So, so next year, like Tyler was mentioning in his presentation, we've been really, pretty cautious about how much maintenance we did last year and this year because of the COVID thing. So we had to, have to catch up on a lot of the maintenance that we didn't do this year and last year. So that's why you see a significant amount on the maintenance on MVH fund next year. Basically, we have to do a lot more strip patching, a lot more crack sealing, because some of the roads we paved are at the three to four-year timeframe that we have to go back and crack seal a lot of that. Same with a lot of the sidewalks, and most of this MVH money is restricted. We can only use for that purposes only. We cannot use it for storm removal or anything. So that's why you see a lot of money allocated on, for the repairs of, for next year on the MVH.
I think you anticipated my question, which was, you know, why, why did that budget go from 1.2 to 2 million dollars?
Because we were very cautious. We didn't barely did any strip patching. We did strip patching, but not to the extent of how many complaints we get. We still have subdivisions that we have to go in and fix it. And we, we were cautious this year and last year with the COVID that we didn't want to spend that, that kind of money.
Yeah, I mean, that just makes sense. We didn't know what COVID was going to do the economy, so that makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Hey, question. We have Shadland. Like, how do you, you guys have a list of how do you choose which streets to do?
Yeah, so every year, we have to submit, we, we'd come up with an asset management plan, and that is important that we have to get that done, because for Community Crossing Grant to be awarded to us, we have to have that plan. So every year, we have a plan that we developed a few years ago, and every year we update it based on what we did and based on how the condition deteriorated that year. So we, so that plan is available online, that plan has to be approved through Indar. That's kind of what Tyler said about wheel tags. That's the same plan we will use for when we go after wheel tags. So that plan is updated, and that, the top five in the list gets picked up every year because it's based on a rating. So the, the smaller the rating is, that means the road needs to be done sooner. So.
I get that. Let me ask you a couple cool questions on that. Does the state help us with any funding on the, on Shadland from 46 to the highway?
Basically, no, it doesn't. They don't.
We're responsible from the interstate to 46.
46. So the Community Crossing Grant that we just submitted, that includes that piece of Shadland.
It's so hard from the highway traffic, man.
Yeah. It is on us. So the community, the list of streets that we just submitted last month on community crossings for a million, that included that piece of Shadland.
Okay, yeah.
So the, the Indar will award that, announce the award in October, like in the next two weeks, and we are, I'm very hopeful that we will get that community crossing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
It's done off a PESA rating. I don't know if I told you that.
Yeah, it's a PESA rating. We go out.
We don't do the PESA rating.
Right, right. You guys hired the outside. You didn't do it on time.
Any other questions?
Street Department is.
Thank you.
Our objectives and our accomplishments, I say, our budget's pretty much the same as last year's. We're not really adding much to it. Yeah. What, we'd like to get a new dump truck. It's not going to be a big truck. It's going to be a smaller truck, because right now, you can't get a big truck.
Single axle?
Single axle. It's be, be like a ton truck. Fishers, you see Fishers, they, them little red ones, they run. We can get those, but I've got, I've ordered a dump truck a year and a half ago. I have not got it yet. So that's how far back everything is. And our new hot box, we got our state-of-the-art hot box, it's still on the, my new loader, it's on the boat somewhere, is what they keep telling me. So, yeah, it's, steel's went up 600%, is what the vendors are telling us. That's why we can't get stuff.
600%.
Yeah, I mean, we stepped the city twice this year. I mean, that's, that, we've got more miles than that because we still sweep, we still red decks and everything. Sidewalk programs, it's just going through the roof. I mean.
It's awesome.
We're tearing up here, Nick. Our tree removal and the right of ways, I mean, you guys see on the roads that we're, we're taking stuff out, dangerous trees.
Great job on 79th Street.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're doing, we're, it's, it's a project. It's an ongoing project. Those are any more questions on?
Anything on streets? For Mr. Hannigan?
We order enough salt.
I got salt.
We should have it left over from last year and the year before.
We didn't use much last year. I've got, I got over 200 tons, or more than that, probably.
Yeah.
But we have allocated 200.
200,000 this year, if you look at it, yeah, again, for getting more salt.
We shouldn't need any more salt.
You're going to be ordering off 22's budget instead of 21's budget out of 22. It's, it's kind of weird.
Yeah, because you'd probably be running out of places to put it.
All I gotta do is make a phone call, because we're in the state bid, so we, we don't get left out. We're already on the list. Brine, we have plenty of brine.
Okay.
We're ready, just not, it's not really ready. We're ready, we're not ready to, we don't want it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for the time.
Who's next? I'll be brief on the garage budget. It's flat.
Okay.
Yeah. You're good, yeah. So we, we're up to date on all of our equipment in that department. It's a good, good place. We left that thing flat. So that's on that one. What I will direct.
I would encourage you guys to come see the new shop, what we, what we've done. We did, we do want to do some add-ons to it, because we know we're out there on it. Come out and check out the new equipment that we bought.
Top notch. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, specifically on that one, we just actually received a new mobile lift. But what I wanted to highlight really quick on the fund financials, just so you, you can see, what you're, what you're hearing and what you can see in the book is on page 55. It's the MVH fund. So what we're talking about, that million, and seeing that 1, 2 to go to 2 million, it's the Other Services and Charges line of MVH. It's a, it's that million overage, and I want to clarify on that, too. When we receive the gas tax, and we just talked about this in Finance, it's 50% goes to the MVH unrestricted fund, and now the statement has created a sub-fund of MVH. So you still appropriate that at the fund level, but we have to make sure we track the restricted money. So that million dollars that we're asking for is for crack sealing, strip patching, things that fall under preventative maintenance, and you can only use out of the restricted money. So it's kind of a situation where if we don't use it, it's just, it's forced to sit. So that is, I just want to clarify, and if you look at the book, kind of what that is. That is, on their end, the next up is IT. We'll be really quick, and then Parks.
Can I ask? Excuse me, Madam President. May I ask?
Counselor?
Over here.
I looked up there. Yeah, you have a question for Tyler?
Yes, on page 54, I noticed that the 22 projected and the 23 proposed total revenue is an increase.
Which page?
On page 54, I'm sorry.
54, okay. With you.
Total revenues 22 and 23. Do you know what that increase can be attributed to?
Yeah, so I actually have a property tax section here that you can see. So the levy that we can increase is, it was 5%, which is a historical high. That makes up a lot of it, and then the Marion County income tax, or supplement, I'll keep saying that, Marion County estimates that we received just a few weeks ago, that's, that makes up pretty the bulk of the difference. Yeah.
And then also on total expenditures, it appears that those decreased by about a million.
If you back out the 1.5 transfer, it's, looks like we'd be spending this year 24.5 million, so it's a slight increase in spending.
1.5 we put in rainy day.
If you back that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good.
So if you go over our 20, 22 accomplishments, I tried to keep it fairly high level. I know if I get too technical, nobody's going to know what I'm talking about. Off-site backup, so now we have a copy of our server data at a remote facility not connected to our network, so for any sort of disaster event. Got new printers for the city. We're pushing hatches to workstations now. Pretty much a continual process of replacing machines with the city. We age them out accordingly. We got new security cameras for this building, two streets facilities. And a couple other things on there. One of the things that will be completed close to end of year is the, what's listed up there is an SDWAN project. While that is a technical term, long story short, is it's going to get us away from all the expensive internet connections that we get with CenturyLink or Lumen or Level 3, or had a couple other names, too. And we will manage those connections through basically business Comcast or AT&amp;T lines instead of having the big ISP. Been a lot of network changes here over the past six or seven years, and we're getting to a place that's really good. For 2023, really didn't, we knew it was going to be a tight year. We are getting a product called NetMotion for the police. It's going to allow them, when they have their laptop in their car, if they walk it into the police station, what this software is going to do is it's going to switch them from the network that they use in their car to the network that they use in the building unassisted. Today, that, they have to engage my team to get that switched over.
Just the, the switch? That's crazy.
Other than that, that was, I mean.
Did you say there, I think in, I saw previously or heard it, there was another cost savings you were working on for the hotspots? There were some redundancy hotspot usage?
Yeah, there's some, you know, as technology's emerged, we have Wi-Fi hotspots and cellphones. You can, with the hotspot, all that technology is now on a cellphone, so we're going through and trying to find instances where we can get rid of, or consolidate it down to just having a cellphone. There's a lot of job roles that will require it, though, fieldwork and whatnot, and then pretty much public safety wholesale is out of scope for that. It won't work for them because they need specific network connections to get to the public safety resources.
Great.
Any other questions?
I have one question. You hit on something early on, and I want to make sure I was following you correctly. When you said we're at a place now where our data is stored on another service, is that what you?
Think of it as a third copy. So within the city, we have the, the actual data, and then we have a backup of it. And then within the city still, we have another copy of it, but now we have one that's in Hammond.
So that, so, okay, and so I'm leading, I'm asking that this is very important to keep us from being hijacked, or if we were hijacked, we would be okay? And I've read articles about cities being hijacked and ransomed.
It would be for recovery.
Be for recovery.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't have to pay the ransom?
Exactly.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
And.
Anderson got jacked like last year or something like that.
The way the horizon's looking, I don't, I think at some point, it will be a criminal offense to pay that ransom.
Hmm, hmm, that's cool.
I mean, there's things in the works.
To make, that makes you have to have your backup, right. That's right. That's good for your business.
I would like to touch a little bit on security, because it, it's, it's everybody's concern, and I would feel like I would not be doing you justice if I were to walk away and not talk about it a little bit. We have invested heavily in security resources, Santi Solutions has as a company. There's a slight change in the way the Santi contract is working, and now Santi is baking, so I think, I've, I've been with the company three years, and I wasn't involved with the previous contracts, but I think the way it was worked out was that the security costs were a line item on the budget. And now, those security costs are baked into the Santi contract because we won't, we won't work with you if you don't do that.
Right.
So, I mean, it's not a, it's not, it's not optional anymore.
That's right.
And we, we have upgraded the security tools, and it's been an improvement. It helps me sleep at night.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to wrap up on the, on the numbers side for that budget, it's a slight increase of $15,700. Everything we talked about is a minor increase. And on the data side, too, the nice thing with New World is that we're hosted, so all of our financial, HR, everything, all that data is stored on the cloud at a separate company. So it's a nice security feature. If you recall back, I think in '15, we lost a lot of that data, and now we don't have to worry about that so much. So, yeah. IT does have that, those Tyler Tech fees in there as well, so that's another part of their budget. That is it for all the departments today. They've all.
Well, the one standing behind you.
I said you were going to say.
I tried. I tried for you guys. I, no, we actually got rid of that one.
Hello, how are you this evening? Thank you. We are very excited. Let's see, page 125 will take us to Park. Oops.
I don't know my password. On there, I just have.
Yeah, you don't.
The objective's in goal, so yeah, let me just flip. You're on. Okay. Step out of your way. Do you have any room? Do you have a page number?
Okay, you'll see with our accomplishment, with our objectives for 2023, we will be looking at the repaving of the Franklin Road parking lot at Community Park. You'll see some other things happening at Community Park, so we will be installing some new playground equipment there. Also, the, at the baseball softball fields there, you will see the lighting PA system and the scoreboards, thank you, going in there. So very exciting about that. Also, in Lee Road Park, you'll see a. Also, in Lee Road Park, you'll see a build-out of what we're calling a civic center. So the popularity of what's happening with the pickleball courts there, if you drive by on a regular basis, you will see there are people there all the time now. And it's nice to see that happening and exciting. But with that, we want to be adding in that civic center area, have a place where picnic tables people can enjoy. Also, there will be bocce ball, cornhole. So continuing to add to those amenities as we continue to grow and repurpose that park. You will see us creating more partnerships as we're looking to expand Tour Lawrence through partnerships. So though that's not a budget impact for you, you'll see that happening. And the continued preservation of our butterfly gardens. But also, you know, we need things to get stuff done. So in our budget, you're gonna see things like park maintenance equipment, such as the mower, new mower, truck, gator, and sprayer. Anything you want to add on that stuff, Eric?
No, again, some of those offsets will be in 2020, not 2023. Playground specifically, Community Park, we're gonna purchase it out of this year's funds, install it next year. So there will be some ancillary purchases. We'll have to make up next year's funds for that playground. We are on a matching program right now with our vendor. So we'll get essence twice amount of value for that playground. Ordering it this late in the year.
And then also you'll see work begin to happen through the grant that we received with the Lee Road and 50, and 63rd Street trails. So we're excited to see those trails and getting more connectivity. I was really thinking about how useful that's gonna be as I was driving after a meeting back to the farmer's market about a week ago. And I saw people walking with their farmer's market bags from that area. And I thought, oh, how wonderful to make it safer for them to get there. So any questions for us?
I have a question, I think. Just a, a simple question, but could you explain the, the parks non-reverting fund a little bit? And it's separate in, and I think there was a concern that that one runs a deficit slightly, but I don't think that that necessarily impacts the general fund. So.
It does not affect the general fund. We can only spend what we take in. So as we do some projects there and different things, we are very careful to make sure that, you know, if we have it, we can spend it. Otherwise, we can't. So we put projects and some things in there. Also, out of the non-reverting fund is the maintenance of our rental facilities and things that we need to keep those happening. Because since we generate the revenue off of that, that's also what we use to take care of it.
Kind of in the title, it doesn't revert to the general fund. It's non-reverting.
Yeah, it's an operational fund. So if we have the funds and we do the operation, if not, we don't.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam President, can I ask you a question about the, the leasing of the Starett Center?
Absolutely. We are excited that Heartland Film will be relocating their headquarters to the City of Lawrence. And they will be leasing the Starett Center and operating out of there. We, they will be doing some renovations there. It's about $325,000 because 230 that alone is going into the restrooms. And they will completely be gutting and fixing those. If some of you haven't had the pleasure of entering the women's restrooms there, like many of us here have, but you had to be a very short person to not hit your knees on those doors. So it's a welcome renovation to that happening there. And additionally, we will be receiving about $20,000 more a year in income from that facility than we did in our highest year back in 2017. So it's really a good partnership for us. They're very good for economic development. They will be doing a strong partnership with Arts for Lawrence and using their facility and doing some programming there as well. Yes.
Just for clarification, so that means that the entire Starett building would not be available to the general public for leasing anymore? Like for weddings and that kind of thing?
Correct. We will be shifting all of those over to Jen Park. Eric took a candidate that we have actually made an offer to as a master gardener. So we will continue to focus. That's a seasonal position for us. So we will be using some of our seasonal dollars that are in our budget and have been in our budget for a master gardener. And one of the focuses will be enhancing the grounds of Jen Park to make that be the place where everybody wants to have their wedding because there'll be beautiful gardens there for their pictures and with all the lovely things with inside that building, the fountain outside. We really have had some people that I've personally taken over there, and they've been very pleased and excited about that facility and didn't realize that Hidden Gem was back there.
Do you have another question about that? I know in speaking to people that have leased or rented, you know, the Starett building, Jen Park, that there's a substantial waiting list for people to rent them for special events. Now that we no longer have the Starett building, have we given any thought to what impact that's going to have to the public that wants to rent these facilities now that we've lost one of them?
Obviously not.
The, the Jen Park had about 40% occupancy. So with moving some clients or some renters from the Starett Center, we hope to bring that up to Ohio.
What was the occupancy of the Starett Center besides, before you guys started to get that?
That's first, the year that Cory was referring to, 2017, we made $39,000. So that has been about 50 rentals, probably.
And we, so with.
52 weeks in a year. So that's.
But we, but there's also the whole, every day of the weekend. So they're only rented that one day. So if there's 52 weeks, there was an opportunity for 150 rentals there.
I just, I'm just really disappointed that, that, that this was just, I just learned about this right now. And I personally believe that the Starett Center was one of the most popular destinations in the City of Lawrence that people use for the whole east side of Lawrence. There's nothing that I can do about it now. But it's really, I'm very, 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 very disappointed. Before I ever lived in Lawrence, we used to do youth football there, where the whole city would come together. It's been a place for families. You know, the, the place in Jen Park is big. What are you gonna do when you need something for 30 people?
We have the activity center over.
Not as nice as, as Starett Center was. So when we talk about increasing the quality of life in the City of Lawrence, it's done through the assets of the Parks Department. And unfortunately, I, I hadn't heard yet. So I guess my constituents don't know. But as the winter comes and people start to do more things indoors, I'll hear about it. And I'm gonna send them straight to your door because you didn't ask me. And so I don't know how you increase the quality of life and you sell off the assets that improve people's lives. It's disappointing.
And it is a lease, just to make sure, so that, for the record, that we didn't not sell it off. But yes.
You leased it for five years. It's no longer useful to the people of Lawrence. You didn't sell it, but it's not useful for the people of Lawrence. It's a five-year lease to a Heartland Film Festival that half the people in this city don't even go look at those independent films. Our, our citizens aren't going to the Heartland Film Festival downtown and all around still. It's not who we are. We're a family-oriented city.
If I may, for the record, and what Counselor Giles just said, because this is what I was going for, or where I was looking to go, is exactly what he just said. I mean, it, been around Lawrence a long time. And I know a lot of special events have happened in the Starett building. And to me, it's disappointing, you know, that the citizens, it's a beautiful building. And.
You just asked us to remodel the place. I didn't remodel it for you to give it away.
Yeah, I feel exactly just like he does. I, I'm really disappointed that the council wasn't made aware of this before this decision was made. But anyway, I'll not, Counselor Giles said it pretty well the way I would have said it. So I'll just leave it at that.
I'm sorry.
Sounds like we need a parks meeting.
Any other questions for the budget? Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you.
We go. Now we're officially done. I'm gonna close this down. Is there any other high level?
No, just housekeeping. On October 3rd, Nance will conclude their budget discussion. We will have a committee as a whole meeting, which was already scheduled for the redistricting. But in that, also on that agenda will be the committee as a whole discussion of the budget. And we will have the public hearing as well on 10-3.
What time are the finance and the?
Finance.
Let me coordinate with the other members.
She'll get it. It'll, we'll basically be here from 5 on, regardless of, and obviously, finance will have to go first.
Okay.
Just let me know.
I will.
Just more of a note for everyone. I won't be able to make it on the 3rd. But if you do have any questions, feel free to reach out, call, text, email.
Will Humphrey be here? Will somebody from your office be here?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, more so, he'll just.
Go ahead, Tyler.
You said something, you said the rental income of the Starett Center was like 30-some thousand dollars, and now it's gonna be $20,000 more. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
I believe you did.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's like, so is the estimate $55,000 in revenue? $60,000 in revenue. $60,000 divided by 12. My geez, a month to rent that big space?
Along with the $325,000 in improvements.
Oh, so they're gonna make all the improvements to the building?
They're making all the improvements for the $325,000.
Oh, that, okay. Thank you for sharing that. I didn't know that.
Yes.
How much, how much did we improve the building a couple of years ago? How much did we put in?
You just did the additional appropriation for the roof, which was in seriously bad shape. That was one, or 220,000 was the appropriation for that?
So I'm curious, we put some money in that building just a couple of years ago, right? That's when you guys changed it and changed the leasing agreement. Now you're telling me that we're gonna put 200, that now the building needs an additional $600,000 in it? If they're putting 3-something, we just put 2-something. That's close to 600 grand. I know we put, what we put in it?
The interior, we spent about 140 on painting. It was just cosmetic.
Well, we improved the kitchen, too. Appliances, electrical, like all, all $140,000, what it was? So we got $140,000. We're putting in another two. So let's say we put in.
220.
220?
360. They're basically matching what we did.
Inside centrally.
So to that end, the, the one thing with the lease agreement is they will, moving forward, be maintaining the inside. So with that 360.
They got a first right of refusal on, on renewing the, of the lease?
They do have an option to renew, but they will also then, we, for the first year, to help the first cup, the first portion of the lease, the first five years, we are still covering utilities like we do with the lot because that helps because they're doing the 325,000. But then after that, we'll, utilities and we have the right to increase the rent, too, at that point.
Will the 325 be reconfiguring that building to meet their needs?
No, it will, they will not move any walls in the building. The only walls that you will see change, I shouldn't say any walls. There is a wall in the women's restroom that you walk in that, it's a, not a structural wall. They're taking that down. When it is done, it will look exactly like it does today. When they have their 13 employees move in there, they are using those cubicle, just temporary walls. They are not building, moving, or changing any walls. Another thing they are doing is, we do not have a railing going down those steps. It's not ADA compliant that way, things like that. So they will be doing that repair. They will also be the two exterior doors in that big room. If you see, there's lots of light that can go through there, meaning a lot of either cool or heat, you know, or cold air are going out of that building. They are replacing those doors, which will make them more energy efficient. But they will all be within the structural, the integrity of the building so that it will be exactly the same integrity.
For-profit or nonprofit?
They are a nonprofit organization. And with them coming onto the cultural campus, it is giving us the opportunity to round out our offering and now apply to become a cultural district in the state. So with the addition of the library and with Heartland Film being here, Arts for Lawrence, we are then pursuing becoming a cultural desk district.
We had to give them a public building to do that?
We didn't have to give them.
Lease them a public building?
We didn't have to lease a public building to do that. But we needed to attract another large arts organization here. They are only one of 17 film festivals in the United States, one of 34 in the country that actually can submit to all three categories of the short films at the Academy Awards. They are a very well, well-known organization that will bring a lot to Lawrence.
I think all this, okay, so let me, let me stop us here. This dialogue is good. It's great.
It's not the right.
And I, but the council should have been informed of all of this. And, you know, we shouldn't have to use our discussion to understand the particulars on the Heartland Film Festival contract. So part of the frustration that you're hearing is that, like, we shouldn't be hearing this for the first time. This is a city asset. And, you know, we haven't seen the contract, so we don't know whether or not we should have been part of it or not. But sure, that'll be determined. But we just should have been informed. It just would have been the right thing to do so that we could understand and so that we can, you know, dispel of some of the, there's like rumors out there. You know, and, and we're talking to our constituents all the time. We need to be able to tell them, no, that's not true. It's a five-year lease, and this is how it's gonna work. And just the basics, we don't, you know. So thank you for taking the time to do this. I appreciate it. And I'm sure there may be more questions. But I think we'll just, we'll table this for now and maybe have a parks discussion so that if anyone has any, you know, further questions, you have the opportunity to do that. Counselor Wells heads up that committee, and I'm sure he can get something scheduled if there's any further dialogue needed.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to thank you for allowing the department heads to finish up what we weren't able to get to in finance. So thank you for allowing this extra time.
No problem. The meeting's adjourned.